District Board of Education. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the God of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reading of the mission statement, Mr. Jonathan Swift.
In collaboration with staff, community, parents, and students, the Marlington Local School District will develop lifelong learners who understand and apply knowledge and demonstrate excellence in pursuing the highest standards with effective intervention to challenge every student.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. Hagan?
Here.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Here.
Mrs. Krupko?
Here.
Mr. Ryan?
Here.
Mr. Smith? Swift?
Here.
Adoption of the meeting agenda. I'll need a motion for the, to adopt the following agenda for the February seventeenth.
So move.
Second.
Is there no longer a space on here for additions and corrections?
There should be.
There is now. There's there.
Okay.
Okay, so.
I think you usually adopt it first, though.
Right. Additions or corrections.
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda. And I have, let me see here, one, two, three, four, five different items. I'd like to do them one at a time. I'd like to motion to bring to the table the second, or the tabled second reading of the nondiscrimination policy to the floor to discuss where the board and the district stand on the teaching of the tenets of critical race theory in our classrooms.
So list the second, list all the, that you're talking about.
What's that?
List all of the items you would like to amend it.
Okay. The second motion is to reconsider and discuss committee appointees, specifically the Buildings and Grounds Committee. At our meeting two years ago, Mrs. Humphreys made the case and requested that the current board president change the appointed committee members of the Curriculum Committee for a board member that was better suited to that committee, and it was honored. I'm only asking for the same consideration to be on the Building and Grounds Committee.
Would you just say what you're asking for, and then we won't discuss it yet, as yet? What's the third one?
The next motion is to amend the minutes of the December sixteenth, 2021 meeting to include all motions that were made, of which two motions that were made by the board president and one item that was on the agenda were left out of the minutes. The next motion would be to going back to having all board meetings, including committee meetings, livestreamed, and to discuss as to why, how, and when the decision was made, and more importantly, who made the decision to not livestream our last four committee meetings. And then finally, discussion on the Nexus Pipeline updates.
Is there a second for the motion to amend? Hearing none, the motion dies. Going back to the original, I'm sorry, the original agenda. Do we, let's, is there any discussion on the original?
I, I have two small things. I apologize, I don't know how at some point between the last couple of days, the calendar did not end up, so if you're looking at board docs, adopting the calendar is on there, but if you printed your agenda earlier today, for some reason it had fallen off of there, just so you're aware. And then if it's okay, could we set the next Board of Education meeting before we go into executive session? So just flipping G and H.
Yes, I'm, we'll flip G and H.
Just that way people don't have to stay for executive.
I guess my only other discussion on the meeting agenda is since we're omitting things from the minutes, I would just ask that my suggested amendments tonight are included in the minutes of this meeting?
That's not part of the record, or is it, Patty?
I can go back and relook at those.
Okay.
And bring them back to be, to be adopted correctly. I apologize.
This is part of the reason why I think it's important that we livestream and record our meetings, so that if there are things omitted from the record, there's an actual record of what happened.
Okay. We're not discussing, we're, we're not, we'll take the roll call for the agenda.
As amended by Dr. Mike?
No, we, that died.
No, as amended by Dr. Mike.
Oh, by Dr. Mike, yes. Yes, I'm sorry, as amended by Dr. Mike, correct.
I'm sorry, do you need a motion yet? I'm, I'm lost at this point.
I know.
Was there a second to adopt the agenda as it originally stood with Dr. Mike's? I'll second that if there, if it hasn't been.
Okay. The motion to amend with Dr. Mike's changes, with that, you're making the motion. Kathy is, and Mark is seconding, so if you would call the roll on that, Patty.
Mr. Hagan?
No.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass for one.
Thank you. Special presentations, Dr. Mike.
Okay, good evening, everyone. One of my favorite parts of our meeting tonight. So we are very happy to welcome back in-person recognition of our Students of the Month, and we are joined by all of our principals tonight. I just wanted to mention to all the families out here, we will do the presentations. You're welcome to stay afterward, but if, we won't be offended then if you'd like to leave, we know the weather's bad, if you don't want to stay through the whole meeting. Totally up to you. So we will start with our high school principal, Mr. Farrell.
Good evening. Mike Farrell, high school principal, and I'm here to present Mallory Bennett as one of our Elks Students of the Month at the high school. Mallory, if you'd come up, please. Mallory is the daughter of Joe and Amy Bennett. She is class co-president, a member of National Honor Society, president of Character Counts Club, a member of Spanish National Honor Society, and the Fellowship of Christian Athletes. Mallory is a 2022 Washington Ruhrton Rising Senior and 2021 Buckeye Girls State Delegate. She is a four-year letter winner and EBC Scholar Athlete on the varsity volleyball team. Mallory is very interested in math, especially calculus. She plans to attend Ohio University to major in mathematics and ultimately pursue a high-level math-based career. Mallory's teachers report that she is remarkable in class. She is highly organized and always has her assignments done completely neatly and on time. She arrives early to class every day with a smile on her face, ready to learn. She has a positive attitude and is enthusiastic about learning new material. She is extremely polite and respectful. She is an exceptional role model for her peers and a leader in our school. She is admired not only by our other students, but by the staff as well. It's my honor to present Mallory this certificate of award as the Elks Student of the Month at Marington High School. Congratulations, Mallory. Our other Elks Student of the Month is Lance Beechy. Lance, can you come up, please? Lance is the son of Kevin and Deena Beechy. He is a member of National Honor Society, Rotary Interact Club, Fellowship of Christian Athletes, and the Duke Pound. Lance has been recognized as a Stark County Student of the Month nominee, EBC Scholar Athlete, and is currently on the Dean's List at Stark State College. He is a member of the Varsity Cross-Country and Track Teams and the Lifting Program. Lance is an active member of his church youth group, youth group, sorry, and a summer camp counselor. Lance enjoys hanging out with his friends, watching and playing sports, reading, and cooking. He plans to major in Computer Science Engineering at the University of Akron or the Ohio State University. Lance's teachers say that he's extremely gifted in many areas, but science and mathematics seem to be his special talent. Not only has he earned commendable grades, but he's involved in a variety of extracurricular activities, including track, cross-country, church youth group, just to name a few. He is a person of many talents and a great personality, too. He is an honest, caring individual and is respected by all of his teachers. Lance is a very reliable and dependable person as well. He puts 100% in any project that he's involved with. It is my honor to present Lance this certificate of award as the Elks Student of the Month at Marington High School. Congratulations, Lance. At this time, I'll turn it over to our middle school principal, Mr. Nick Evenich.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Farrell. Thank you for stealing my plan on how to recognize the kids with teacher's thoughts as well. I've done that for six years, and now Mr. Farrell's copying me, but we'll let it slide, so that's all right. All right, so we have two middle school students to honor tonight, and our first one is a great young lady, eighth grader Annie Grimes. All right, Annie is the daughter of Adam and Jessica Grimes. Her favorite class is Algebra I with Mrs. Kenny. She plays basketball for the Lady Dukes, and she enjoys camping with her family and friends. Should I tell them who your friends are you camp with? No, okay. She does not want you to know she camps a lot of times with Mr. Evenich. Next year, it won't be your principal, so you'll be okay. All right, she's never going again. She has camped all over Ohio, as well as Pennsylvania and Tennessee. Annie's teachers had this to share about her. Annie is a hard worker who makes class fun with her friendly personality and willingness to participate. Annie always has a positive attitude, is well-prepared for class, takes her work very seriously. Annie has improved a lot throughout the year, and we expect great things from her in the future. The last teacher said Annie always brings a positive attitude to class. She is helpful and caring to those around her. Great job, Annie. Keep up the good work. Annie Grimes. Next up is eighth grader Noah Seaburn. Noah is the son of Tiffany Lee. His favorite classes are gym, science, and American history. Noah plays football and basketball for the Dukes, and he's a member of the Boy Scout Troop 177, where he's earned the distinction of a Star Scout. His favorite activity on the side is roller skating with friends on the weekends. Quick story about Noah, I told him, "Oh, do you roller skate at Starlight?" He goes, "Well, no, it's called Deerfield, but the old people still call it Starlight." And quickly said, "No offense, Mr. Evenich," so I didn't think he was talking about me, but I guess he was. All right, Noah's teachers had this to share about him. Noah is one of the hardest-working students. He's all, he always completes assignments with thoughtfulness and care. Another teacher reported that Noah is a perfectionist when it comes to his work. They appreciate his efforts and willingness to help others. Lastly, Noah is a, is helpful to other students, diligent about his work, contributes in class discussions, but is also thoughtful in his responses and not afraid to ask questions when he doesn't understand something. Great job, Noah. Keep up the good work. All right, next up is Ms. Ashley Weber from Lexington Elementary.
Thank you, Mr. Evenich, and I'm new, so I didn't steal anything from anybody. Good evening. We are proud to, to recognize Mr. Tyler Heatherington this evening. Come on up, Tyler, as our Kiwanis fifth grade student of the month. Tyler is the son of Eric and Rebecca Heatherington. Mrs. Porter and Mrs. Kellums had a few things to say about Tyler. They said that Tyler is an amazing student. He is clever, thoughtful, energetic, and a good role model, good role model for other students. He takes, he takes on each day with an open attitude, which helps him build his knowledge and investigate new ideas. Tyler is a great listener and asks questions when he is unsure. Way to be a dominating Duke. Keep up the good work, said Mrs. Porter and Mrs. Kellums. What we also know about Tyler is that he loves math and social studies. In his spare time, he loves to play uker with his family. Me too, buddy. And Yahtzee. He also wants to be a pilot and visit Hawaii. And if you wanted to tell us one more thing about himself that he'd like to share, he currently plays basketball and baseball, and next fall, he would like to play football. Congratulations, Tyler. And I'm going to introduce Kitty Moore from Marlboro.
Have to bring this down. Good evening, everybody. I am here to introduce our February Kiwanis Student of the Month, Rowan Morris, and unfortunately, Rowan couldn't make it tonight, but I'm going to say these awesome things from his teachers about him. Rowan works hard every day, following directions in class and throughout the building, and positively contributes to class discussions each day. You can always look to Rowan for engaging conversation, a smile, and a laugh. His friends have described him as helpful, funny, intelligent, and kind. Rowan sets a wonderful example of our Duke pride expectations and demonstrates a higher understanding for learning. We are very proud of Rowan and all he has accomplished this school year. Best wishes for a successful remainder of the year, Rowan. A few other things about him. His favorite subject in school is science, and Rowan is very fond of his pets. He has one pet cat, one pet dog. His cat's name is Gizmo, and his dog's name is Baker. In his goals for the future, he wants to visit Hollywood. He said, "Anything could happen. The sky's the limit." And in his free time, he likes to play video games, and he has, he has achieved a high skill doing so. And I thank Rowan for being an amazing kid, an amazing Duke, and we are very proud of him. Great job, Rowan. Thank you. Last, but certainly not least, Mr. Spandio, Washington Elementary.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Yanni Spandio from Washington Elementary, and I'm here to introduce Brady Davis. Brady here?
Yep.
Brady is the son of Mr. and Mrs. Erin and Nicole Davis. His teachers nominated Brady. They said he is an excellent student and a kind person. Brady has a positive attitude, loves coming to school, really enjoys social studies and especially history, and whenever he's at school, he's all smiles. And because of all these characteristics, they are sure that he has a bright future ahead of him. Brady loves social studies, especially history. He lives at home with his mom, his dad, his sister. He has five cats that he enjoys spending time with, and he likes when they play Family Board Game Night. We asked Brady what he wants to do in the future. He said he'd like to be a police officer in Alliance, and one day he'd like to go to New York City and visit the 9/11 memorial. My favorite answer of Brady's, we asked him if there's anybody in the future he'd like to meet. He said, "Not really unless something cool happens." We asked him to tell us something special about himself. He said he has started recently taking lessons to play the trumpet. He said he just started for fun, wanted to learn a little, a little bit, but now he really likes it and is his new favorite hobby. Congratulations, Brady. Nice job.
Great job to all our students. Public participation, did anyone sign up for?
I received no.
Okay. Okay, this is one, if you would like to leave, we'll give a little space here. And thank you for coming. Okay, we'll go on with committee reports. We'll start with Finance Committee, Mr. Mark Ryan.
Okay. We had a finance committee on February first, Tuesday, a couple weeks ago, and we had Kathy Krupko, myself, along with Dr. Mike, Patty, and Dan Swisher. We were, those were the five that were active in the meeting. The agenda consisted of talking about school finances and current and future financial suggestions. So I'll just highlight a few things that were, were covered. The main thing that the finance committee is concerned about is the, is the deficit. If you look at, we, we've talked about the, the budget forecast, fiscal year 2023, which starts July first, we are forecast to run a $1.9 million deficit. And in fiscal year '24, which is the following year, so it's about 16 months away, we're scheduled to have, we're forecast for a $3 million deficit. So when we talk about the budget forecast, it ties in with the need for the levy. We have a levy on the ballot in May that's going to generate about $4 million, and that is going to give us some time, four, five years hopefully, along with some, some cuts. There will be some cuts along with that, but it won't be draconian if the, if the levy passes. And I, we talked briefly about how that might look like, and it probably, primarily through attrition. You know, the, Dr. Mike and Patty are already doing that to some extent as staff leaves, retires, move on to other positions outside the district. They take a look at those positions, whether we need to fill them. So some of that's already going on, and some of that can be achieved, and in the end, four or five years hopefully, we'll, we'll still be in good financial health along with passage of the levy. Another note I want to talk about is the, the cash balance. So we have a cash balance at the end of every year, and we call it a cash balance, cash on hand, cash reserve. And basically, we talked about this at the last board meeting, the, having a 90 to 120-day cushion, if you will, to pay bills. And right now, in this current fiscal year, which ends June, June 30th, we ate, we are at 112 days. So if you look at our cash balance for this fiscal year that ends June 30th, we're forecast to have an ending cash balance of almost $8 million. But you, when you, when you forecast that with what we're spending, it amounts to about 112 days of money set aside for bills. This following year, which is 2023, which starts July 1st, our cash balance ends up being 83 days. So over the course of a year, we're going from 112 days to 83 days. So it's, it's, it's declining, and then you go to the next fiscal year, fiscal year '24, we're down to 29 days. So in fiscal year '24, which starts July 1st of '23, so about 16 months from now, that fork, that fiscal year, we will have a roughly a cash balance of almost $2 million. So we're down to just under 30 days. Now, this is not taken into consideration a levy passing. So when you look at those numbers, it, it, it tells us, tells the community how important this levy is to maintain that, because we don't want to get to a zero balance, obviously. We want to have money in the bank for emergencies, unexpected expenses. You know, we have a wastewater treatment plant that could go, you know, any day, things like that. So those are some of the things we talked about. The levy would, would cure some of that, and along with the, the cost cutting, primarily with staff through attrition. Staff is 75% of the district expenses. Few other notes, future discussion for the, for the finance committee, Kathy and I may, may try to get together April or May, before the levy, after levy, whatever we think is necessary, to talk about what the board needs to be aware of if, if it doesn't pass. You know, if the levy doesn't pass, you know, what, what steps are we going to take at that point? Will the levy be put on the ballot again in the fall? So those are the things we talked about. We, we went into some other expenses on, on buildings, some other things that are relevant to, to discuss down the road as a whole. So Kathy, did you have anything you want to add to that?
You covered it well.
Can either of you elaborate on some of the cost-cutting measures that were discussed at the meeting?
Well, the only, the only thing we talked about in, maybe in, in detail was building operations. You know, we have five buildings to operate, and so one of the things we talked about is, you know, what, what kind of utilities are we, we spending on these buildings? What kind of, you know, what, what is, what do staffing, staffing levels look like? So we talked about, we talked about those expenses, you know, what that would look like, how that impacts our, the bottom line here.
Okay, so we're not going to talk about, you know, options with career tech or the conversations that were had about going from three to two elementary buildings, or three to one possibly? That was discussed.
Well, that's a, that's a, that's a board discussion. We, we, we asked about those questions, like what kind of expenses are incurred with some of these buildings. these buildings. But that's, that's a whole board discussion. And that's not going to be relevant until after the, you know, after the levy.
We did not talk about closing buildings. We just asked for what the finances look like with less buildings, more, and we wanted to get a full picture of what the finances were looking like.
I think that those finances should be presented, how much money would be saved going those routes as well.
We can discuss that at a future board meeting. I think it would be relevant to talk about it as a whole board come May, because if the levy passes, then it's a moot point. You know, one of the things to consider is, you know, we have put $2 million each into these three elementary buildings, so, and we have a loan. So it doesn't make any sense to tell the community, hey, we're going to close a building. We're still paying loans on it. It's like, it's like buying a house and then tearing it down, and you're still paying a loan on it. So it doesn't make any sense to talk about that in any serious discussion about closing buildings when we have a levy on the ballot that's going to correct, you know, with passage, is going to correct a lot of the financial, the financial issues have. The other, the other thing that impacts our budget is that we have $1.6 million leaving the operating budget that goes to PI. So when you think about $1.6 million and how that impacts our forecast, our budget, that's significant. And that money is going towards paying the loan and paying for all the repairs. I think Buildings and Ground is going to talk about some of the major repairs. We had a high school roof to think about. We got a wastewater treatment to think about. So that money that we're transferring out for building repairs is needed. Now we need operating money to make up the difference.
Okay, you're referring to the NEXUS money that's transferred to permanent improvement?
Right.
Right, okay. I just want to make the record clear that the resolution to transfer that money to that fund was when you were on the board previously. So I believe there was someone that stated that the previous board made that decision, and I just wanted to clarify.
Yeah, I remember that clearly. Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Any other questions about?
I think it's apparent that what we're looking at is, I mean, everything has to be put out on the table to make the appropriate decision. We can't leave anything, you know, and just say, oh, we won't talk about this, or we won't consider that, or we won't, you know, we have to know what everything looks like, because you can't, I mean, you can't have your cake and eat it too. You can't have everything. So we're going to have to look at everything clearly, and we don't want to lose anything. But, you know, if a levy does not pass, it's a choice we're going to then have to make. Okay, Policy Committee report, Mr. Jonathan Swift.
Policy Committee, the Policy Committee met, we went over, we just did a run-through and a read-through of all the policies that were on for a second reading, and then there's going to be policies on for a first reading. We went over those with Ed Holland from Neola, great guy, walked us through each one. All of the policy updates that we're making at this time are Neola-recommended policy updates to bring us in line with legislative changes, court actions, and that's part of what we pay Neola to do. There were no glaring policy changes that were brought forth by members of the committee, and we just went through Neola's policies. And we recommend at this time that we adopt both the policies on the second reading and the policies on the first reading as committee. And that's it.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay, Building and Grounds Committee, Mrs. Kathy Krupko.
Thank you. We met on February 8th, Jonathan, myself, Dr. Mike, and Dr. Patty, and Dan Swisher were the participating members of the committee. We had asked Dr. Mike and Dr. Patty to come up with a lot of information for us, and fortunately, the Finance Committee information kind of goes hand in glove with a lot of the stuff we have to do for buildings and grounds. We are dealing with buildings that go all the way back to 1951, 1955, 1949s. So we definitely have older buildings that we're working with. They've had a lot of repairs made to them. There are still quite a few that need to be made. We did ask Dr. Mike to prioritize a list for us of things that need to be done. We have a high school roof that's a pretty high priority at a cost of $3 million. It can be done in sections. But my understanding is, right now, we do have some sections where it's leaking so bad that we're also jeopardizing our computer hardware. So we, there are things we need to take action on. We have a wastewater treatment plant at Lexington that we've been nursing along for years, and it's, at some point, it's going to give up. We have a total of nine HVAC rooftop units that need to be replaced. We have wicking at Washington and Marlboro Elementary Schools that need replaced. The HVAC units are a cost of $200,000. Wastewater treatment plant is $500,000. The wicking is another $500,000, and that's a five-year-old estimate. Lexington needs asbestos abatement, if we plan to keep that building at some point, and we've got a cost of about $600,000 on that. We need to replace an underground diesel fuel tank, two of them. We do not have a cost on those yet. And it will require a fuel tank monitoring system at a cost of $20,000. District-wide, we need 17 new doors, a cost of $200,000. The keying system is outrageous at best. There are, you can use 20 different keys in one building before you can actually access things. So that's a system that needs working on, but it's one of the lower priorities for us. Middle priority, new PA systems in throughout the district at a cost of $100,000. The high school auditorium, according to PlugSmart, is beyond repair and update, and it is not air-conditioned. The seats are old. Help me out with anything I'm forgetting. And we also have a number of antiquated servers that need replaced to the tune of $100,000 to $150,000. We have a high school floor that is still sinking, or has been sinking. We think it stopped for the time being, but it needs further evaluation. The bottom line and the estimate that we came up with on this is all of these repairs will total $5.27 million approximately. We get a PI levy, which is for permanent improvements, to the tune of $500,000 a year. So we've been limping along nurturing these. What we have left in that account to spend on $5 million worth of repairs is $861,000. Clearly not enough to get these buildings in the condition that they need to be. Clearly, we're not going to bring in enough over, it'll be years before we can reach this level. And the only way we can get some of these things done at this point is to borrow from the operating funds. And that's what we've been doing to limp along. Did I forget anything, Jonathan? Can you add anything to that?
No, I think that was everything on my list, too.
Yes.
It was an informative meeting, for sure.
What's the priority for, I know you sent a priority list, Dr. Mike, on, where was the high school auditorium? Where was that, like one, two, or three?
Not on there.
Three.
Was it three? Okay, so it's kind of?
Yeah, it's way low. They actually, I believe Dr. Mike told us that they told us it would be cheaper to build a new auditorium than to even think about doing anything with this one. And there are schools that have done that. I think West Branch has one that's independent from everything else. But, I mean, that's a whole nother actual cost that we aren't even dealing with at some point.
Right, right. Tackle at this time.
Did I forget anything, Patty?
I thought you did a great job.
Okay, well, if I did, please jump in. And Dr. Mike, anything that you can think of?
I'd just like to add that I attended the meeting. It also wasn't livestreamed or recorded, and there were a lot of important matters discussed that my background in construction, I could have provided valuable insight toward. There were also questions that remained unanswered. Am I not allowed to participate on the board anymore?
I personally would appreciate if you'd bring your suggestions to the next committee meeting, or to the board.
I'm not allowed to talk at the committee meeting.
Well, what I, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
What I'm seeing is you tried to amend the agenda, and because it was turned down, you're going to add your agenda items in wherever you can on all these topics.
This is relevant to the topic.
That you aren't on the Building and Grounds Committee?
That I could have gave valuable input, and there were a lot of questions that remained unanswered at the meeting.
If you were at the meeting, all you had to do was raise your hand and provide some input.
I cannot do that.
Certainly you can. Any chairman can open the meeting up and answer questions.
No, you cannot.
Okay.
Well, you could have amended beyond that afterwards.
You could have brought it up to us at any point after the meeting also.
Let's go to the next one. Community Relations Committee report, Mr. Swift.
Okay, Community Relations Committee had an informative meeting with members of the public last Thursday. We had some participation from folks from the Marlboro Volunteer Fire Department, from the Marlboro Police Department, Washington Township trustee Merritt Boyce was here, or, yes, Merritt Boyce. Sorry, I've known her so long, I have to think about that, was here also. We talked about the need for a levy and bridging gaps in the community, reaching out to the police chief and fire departments, so they have accurate information as to, you know, what's going on with the levy, where the financial situation of Marlington stands. We did talk about the financial outlook. I think Mark covered that pretty well in his Finance Committee meeting, other than the fact, I think it was a surprise to people that we're currently operating half a million dollars in deficit this year. It'll be $1.9 million in deficit next year, and $3.6 million in deficit the following year. So three years of deficit spending over the next three years is going to put us in a pretty precarious place financially. And Patty did a great job of outlining that in her presentation with the revenue streams and where we are. We also talked importantly, because I think it's important that the members of the community know, that we've made a significant number of cuts over the last 10 to 15 years at Marlington. A lot of that has been done through attrition. We did go through a period where we cut about $1.8 million back in 2008. A lot of those positions were brought back eventually, so we haven't felt the full force of those cuts. But we still did not replace everyone that was cut at that point in time and all the positions that were eliminated. We also talked about past cuts and wage freezes that the teachers had taken in '14, '15, and '16. They took a base pay freeze to help the district get through those financial times. So we wanted people to know and highlight the fact that the district hasn't just been sitting around wasting money and throwing money out the door. We made significant cuts. We made cuts to programs like instrumental music, highlighted with our band program, that we no longer have three full instrumental music teachers. We only have one that services the high school and middle school. And those are the kind of cuts that people don't realize that we've made over the years and are starting to understand. Marlington and their past boards have been very, very financially sound. They've made it this far. It's just that it's time to start looking at, you know, increasing revenue, or we're going to be looking at future cuts. When we talked about future cuts, Dr. Mike had provided the board with several scenarios, and there are things that we don't necessarily want to look at. I don't think anybody wants to look at, but everything's going to be on the table, you know, coming down the line. And rather, we want, we need to, you know, we're at a point where we have to decide whether we want 25 kids in a classroom, or if we want 45 kids in a classroom at the elementary level. And when you talk about 45 kids in the fifth grade, that's a recipe for disaster for our teachers and our administrators at those levels in teaching kids and getting them prepared for standardized testing that they have to take, and preparing them to be, you know, excellent achievers, like our mission statement says. So as far as the discussion went, it was very positive. We had some good feedback from folks at the end of the meeting. Washington Township does have a levy on the ballot for their fire department for a .75 mil levy at the same time as we're going to be on in May. And so it was good to know that and share that information. We're going to try and have these meetings, you know, once or twice a year. We've done this in the past and want to continue to engage with our trustees and community leaders and make sure that we're having outreach going on on a regular basis.
Excellent.
Anything to add, Karen?
No, that was great.
Okay.
Can I just emphasize the fact that we had some local officials here at the meeting was, I think, made a big impact, because I talked to some of those folks afterward, and it, a lot of them were unaware of our situation, and I think they appreciated being invited to actually know the hard facts, because people in the community that have, you know, various positions, either as trustee, fireman, or police chief, you know, people look to them as leaders, and if they have questions, they may ask them, well, what, you know, is this really going on? And so I think it was a smart move to bring them here to have that. I wish there was more of the trustees here, but the ones that were here, I think, it made a big impact, and that's based on what I heard and talking to them. So, good job.
Old business.
I can introduce one, number one under old business is, Mr. Swift talked about these policies. This is the, we call it the book, second reading. So these are the ones that are up for second reading.
Is there a motion to approve the following resolutions from Volume 40, number one through August 2021 as listed?
So moved.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Passed, 5-0.
And then also, under old business, I am asking you to adopt the calendar for the 2022-23 school year.
Is there a motion to adopt the 2022-23 school calendar?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Passed, 5-0.
Under new business, I am asking you to adopt the Volume 40, number two. This is the first reading of the 2022 policies.
Is there a motion to approve the following resolutions from Volume 40, number two, January 2022 as listed?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphries?
Yes.
Mrs. Krupko?
Yes.
Passed, 5-0.
Okay, now I would, it's a pleasure to introduce to you, if you have not met, Mrs. Renee Kaylee. Mrs. Kaylee is our new curriculum director, or Director of Curriculum Instruction and other duties, but she's here tonight to give you a curriculum update, so I'm going to turn it over to her. Mrs. Kaylee.
Good evening, everyone. As Dr. Mike said, I am Renee Kaylee. I have the honor of serving as Marlington's Director of Curriculum and Staff Development, and I'm here this evening just to give you a, I'm going to try to keep it brief, update on all the work we've been doing in the curriculum world. Today, we're going to talk about Marlington's mission. We're going to talk about defining the why and the work that we've been doing with understanding the why behind the work. That's going to lead us into Marlington's ONE Plan, which was our Comprehensive Continuous Improvement Plan is what it's been called in the past, and then moving on to shared leadership and what that model looks like here in the district for this year. I appreciate the fact that our Board of Education shares our Marlington's mission each, at the beginning of each and every board meeting. I think it's so important for our community members to hear that and see that is part of what our why is here at Marlington. Back at the beginning of the year, we started our district leadership team. The very first meeting that we had, before I had any of our district team members come to the meeting, I asked them to please think about their why. And they could either be personal or professional. And I gave them a heads up, because I didn't want them to be caught off guard when they came to the first meeting. And we did take some time during that And we did take some time during that first meeting to have some discussion about the why. And overwhelmingly, I will tell you, the why of every person around that table was because we want to see our kids here at Marlington succeed. And from that, you can see this quote up here, "Every person has a why. Most of us live our lives by accident. Fulfillment comes when we live our lives on purpose." Knowing your why provides a filter through which you can make decisions every day to act with purpose. And based on that, we are, we were able as a team to understand each other and to see the different perspectives that we were coming from and really grow as a team and start to begin to trust our district leadership team members. And from that, we grounded our work for the year and the why. So oftentimes, when we hear of things, we talk about the how and the what, even when it comes to instructional decisions. But understanding the why behind them allows us to work with purpose, on purpose. And so tonight, I'm going to take you into a little bit more of our why and how it came to be and the work that's being done, not only by our district leadership team, but by your building principals that are here tonight and how they're carrying it into their building leadership teams and into our teacher-based teams. And feel free at any time, if you have questions, dot me and I'll do my best to answer those, okay? We are involved in what is called the Ohio Improvement Process and Ed Steps. So every district in the state of Ohio is required to be a part of this process. And part of this process, it started the second part of last year, we participated in a One Needs Assessment. And I am happy to say that Marlington, we did it the right way and including all of our folks from each of our buildings. We had multiple, I think our building principals can attest to this, we had multiple meetings towards the end of last year where we really started analyzing this One Needs Assessment. And what it allowed us to do is we were able to do what are called root cause analysis. So looking at areas where we saw concern, and we would do a root cause analysis in that area to determine where do we need to do, do some work. And based on that, we created, I worked with Colleen Cornish, who's from our State Support Team Region Nine, and we developed our three-year plan. It's called our ONE Plan. And this three-year plan is something that is tied to our state and our federal funding. So the state and federal funding that we receive goes through the CCIP, and it has to be tied specifically to the things we are saying that we are doing here at Marlington. And if you notice, we are in Cohort One, which means we are in year one of our three-year plan. We have colleagues across the state who are in Cohort Two and Three. What I'm very proud of is they are actually looking to Marlington to guide and support them through the process because we are, we are one of the first districts in the state to be able to take part in that. So it's because of the hard work that's happening here by our teachers, by our administrators, that we're able to kind of set that example and blaze a path in that regards. And if you notice the, that circle up there, you know, that step one, when we're thinking of the Ohio Improvement Process, is that identifying our critical needs through that One Needs Assessment. The next part is we start research and selecting those evidence-based strategies. What is it that we are going to do that's evidence-based that's going to help us address those areas of need? And then that third step is when we start to plan for implementation. At that point, okay, now what are we going to do? Now we're getting out to the how. Once we start planning, we're going to start implementing. That's step four. Right now, we are in between three and four. We are doing some of the planning and implementing, and then we are also starting to monitor the plan. And then five, we examine, we reflect, and we adjust. So that is, where we are at is in that step three to four of our three-year plan. Okay, this is a snapshot of our three-year plan. When you put it into the actual system, it doesn't, it doesn't look pretty like this. So what we did was we took it, it's much easier to understand when we break it down into our goal areas. And what I'm going to do next is go into our three goals so we understand the overarching goals. There are student indicators and adult implementation indicators to help support that. And then it goes into strategies and action steps. So the very first goal that we have, we have three goals in our plan. The first one is surrounding academics. And if you notice, it is a lofty goal, but it says by May of 2024, 100% of our students are going to demonstrate a year's worth of growth in both reading and mathematics as evidenced by our district-approved assessments. How are we going to measure that as far as students? 100% of our students are going to show at least a year's worth of growth from the district-approved baseline data annually. And then adult implementation. So what that means is what are our adults, what are our adults doing? How are we going to know that our adults are moving towards that as well? And 100% of our teachers will participate in district-provided PD and effectively implement evidence-based practices as district-approved resources with fidelity as evidenced by walkthrough data and student achievement data. This is a lot of stuff on the page. Here's what this means. So we have been working so hard this year to do a variety of things, such as we started doing curriculum mapping so that we could sit and we can look at our curriculum maps and what exactly is it that we are teaching and when? Is it aligned to the standard? Does it match standards? Does it match the rigor of the standards that the state is setting forth? From there, we're also looking at the resources that we are using. Are they evidence-based? Are they aligned to what the state is saying is high achieving? From that also, you know, we are looking at our high school. I met with Mr. Farrell and Mr. Travis and our school counselors. So that, and our intervention specialists. Because we know our high school is currently on, our district is on watch because of our, our high school, of our students with populations, students with disabilities, and our economically disadvantaged students. We are not showing the growth that we need to show with them in mathematics. So based upon that, we had a meeting. We're really looking into what does our instructional program look like in mathematics? What are the tier one, which are the whole class supports that we have in place for students here at the high school? And then what are those intervention pieces that we have in place for students who are struggling? I could go on and on. Our ELA, at our elementary, we are really focusing in K2 with early intervention and looking at making sure that our students, I always might, I always use little sayings, but we're building a house. And we can't get to the walls or the roof if we are not having our base. And when we're talking about that, our students in our primary grades need to understand phonics and phonemic awareness. And through, and through implementing resources such as Hagerty and foundations and having coaching and training around those, our students, our littlest students are able to get those solid foundational skills that they need for, to have a successful reading career. Based upon that, our title tutors are doing extra, like a double dose of foundations and pre-teach and Hagerty. So even our struggling students are receiving these evidence-based practices. And so it's all about aligning what we are doing and ensuring that we are using best practices that are aligned to evidence-based research. So there are more things in there in the plan. Not only does it have our strategies, but it has action steps for years one and two and three. And then from the district leadership team, our buildings then start to talk about there, what does that look like specifically at the K5 level? What does that look like at the middle school level? And what does that look like then at the high school level? Any questions about the goal one? I know that's a lot, and it's a lot. But I want, I think it's so important because I'm so proud of the work that's being done and to go in and see what's being done in classrooms and during these different meetings that I just, I definitely want to take the time and do due diligence to, to celebrate those things. Goal two is a climate and conditions goal. I'm going to, if you want to read that, it talks about by May of 2024, Marlington will focus on meeting the needs of the whole child through reinforcing and refining our systematic, multi-tiered systems of support. We use a lot of acronyms in education, so I will make sure that I try to spell those out for you. And PBIS, which is your Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports at all three tiers at our elementary, middle, and high school levels. And then, so basically what this goal is doing is we want to make sure that students' needs are being taken care of when they come to school. We want to make sure that students, that our care team data, we're looking at our, we did, just did what's called a TFI, a Tiered Fidelity Inventory, where our school counselors and our school psychologists went through to see how PBIS is being implemented in each of our buildings and each of our tiers. So tier one, which would be whole building level, tier two would be those students who need some additional supports. And tier three would be a lot like one-on-one mentoring and things of that sort. We also have a team that's getting trained through the county right now. I know Mr. Travis and Mrs. Weber are a part of that team, as well as all of our school counselors that are, they're getting trained in PBIS tier two. So then they will be our district representatives. That then, it's like a train-the-trainer model. They'll come back and train us. One of the things that we will also be taking part in is we will be taking part in trauma training so that all of our teachers and staff have trauma training. We were originally going to do that this year and just felt that we needed to do some more research before we went into that. So we will be doing that in the fall PD days of 2022-2023 school year. And then our goal three is the district alignment. This is where we are talking about, you know, making sure that 100% of our instructional staff have opportunities to collaborate. Collaboration in education is so incredibly important. And we have found that, you know, we want to do a better job. And once again, keep in mind, this is coming from our teachers. So this is not something that I sat up and created. This is something coming from our teachers and the voices of our staff. They, they need more time and opportunities to collaborate. And so what we're doing as a district leadership team is we're, we're trying to work through those and find ways to get them more time to be able to meet not only vertically, not only horizontally, so like as a sixth-grade team, but vertically. How do we have our fifth-grade teachers meet with our sixth grade and our seventh grade and so on and so forth? So that goal three is all about the district alignment, which was another, when we did that root cause analysis, we found that this was a high area of need. So that leads me into the shared leadership. And what this means is I am so proud of like this shared leadership that is, I am seeing grow here at Marlington. We have our district leadership team that I've been talking about this evening. And that's comprised of all of your building administrators, Dr. Mike, Mr. Swisher, myself. We have school representation from all of our elementary, middle, and high buildings. We have teachers on there. We have instructional coaches. We have school psychologists. So really coming together as a district leadership team. And we are doing the work of the district and making some different decisions in regards to making sure that everyone's voice is heard. What happens then is then those decisions, and sometimes we have questions and we want more input. So then that will go to our building leadership team. And our building leadership teams will then discuss and, so for example, MAP is one of the resources that we are using. We had some questions about that. We wanted to get feedback from our teachers. And so the district leadership team representatives went to their BLT and presented those, those questions to the team. And then the building leadership team talks to those teacher-based teams, right? And so then we are truly getting the voices of all of our staff members. And then it goes back, they report back to the BLT, and the BLT reports back to the DLT. And it's a nice, it's a nice pattern in that it's not just a top-down approach. It truly is allowing for all of the voices to be heard so that we're making the best decisions as a district. Just a real quick, what the goals of each of our teams are. Our DLT, we do meet, we are monitoring that implementation data. So if we're looking at the plan, we're monitoring the plan. We have monthly meetings. They're about two hours in length. I think we could probably go all day, but we have, you know, we all have multiple hats. So we, we keep it to the two hours. We have an incredibly focused agenda. And then during that time, we have modeling of instructional best practices. Our BLT, the goal of the BLT is to communicate the plan to the teachers, to support the implementation of the plan at the building level, and to analyze student and adult data. We have representation from every grade in our building leadership team meetings. There are monthly meetings, and they also have focused agendas that are driven by the district leadership team. And then finally, we have our teacher-based team. The goal here is to implement the plan and analyze student outcomes. They are content and/or grade level specific, and they are held monthly. We have, that's one of the things that we are working through is having some consistency with the amount of time that our teacher-based teams are meeting. So definitely a lot of work going on in all of those. And then, so thinking about future board updates, you know, one thing I would like to do is keep you abreast of like the, the actual update on the plan implementation. Where are we at? What are we seeing that's going well? We might have to push some things back just based upon time. State mandates and legislation, there is a dyslexia law, a new dyslexia law that has a lot of mandates that we're going to have to adhere to. It's still in draft form, though, the actual guidebook. So once it is finalized, we'll have some more communication in regards to that. And then we are getting ready to look at our K5 Mathematics Adoption Committee. We're meeting on Tuesday because our K5 curriculum that we are using currently, our contract ends this year. So we're going to do an extensive adoption process and vetting resources starting on Tuesday. So we have a team for that. And then any other things that you would all would like to hear about, feel free to let me know and we can update about those as well. But that's all I have for you this evening. If you have any questions, I know it's like a lot. But I thank you for your time. You know, if I can just say one more time, I'm incredibly proud of your building, our building principals and our teachers and for the hard work that they're doing. Because this is not easy work. And it's, it takes time. It takes effort. And it, and sometimes, you know, we don't always agree, but we, we talked about consensus. It doesn't mean we always will agree. And sometimes it might not be our first choice, but we need to do what's best for the district as a whole.
I have, I have a question for you. Is it too early to know across the three elementary buildings how, how, how it's equalized among the different buildings, you know, for math and reading? Is it too early to know those results yet?
Do you, are you talking about state testing results? Well, here's, here's what I will tell you. I am, so our three elementary principals have worked very hard to create, they called it like a super BLT. What that means is after each district leadership team meeting, your three elementary principals, along with their representatives on the DLT, meet to plan out that building leadership team meeting so that it is the same in all three buildings. So there is some consistency there. And then also talking about what are we going to be doing in our TBTs? So I think that's the, the place for us to start, is making sure that we are starting to focus on the same, the same things. Also, we've had, I didn't mention this, but we've had Wendy Lyden has been working, she's an outside consultant that has been working with our K5 ELA teachers. We started the curriculum mapping process there. So we had all K teachers across the district starting to do curriculum mapping, starting with just a scope and sequence. What, what standards are we teaching when? And then we'll start building then, what resources are we using? And then that third tier is, okay, now how are we assessing? How do we know that our students are mastering those standards? So we've done that in grades K1 and 2 across the district. So that's one of those areas. We, I don't think, I'm trying to think of how to say this. I think we're getting there. I think there's still work to be done in that department. But I think we have three, our three elementary principals are doing a phenomenal job spearheading that. Yeah, good question. Any other questions?
Well, just a comment, but I think that your presentation just really shows us how a, a number of things, how big the job is and how much things have changed, what's required, and it's mind-blowing, really.
Yes.
So, thank you. A great report.
Thank you.
And you're planning on coming every month?
If you will have me, I would love to.
As a, as a board member, I'd like to hear a curriculum update every month. And it doesn't have to be as extensive as this, but just, you know, highlight some things.
Sure, I would love to do that.
We are on livestream, so you're going to have a bigger audience.
Well, I think it's important, yes, for the community to see how hard everyone is working and to see the great things that are happening. And I would love to come back, you know, and even if there's specific topics you would like me to report on, you know, the big, I know it's a lot of times always about scores and where are we at, but, you know, with some of the changes we're implementing, I always tell, been in the business a long time, three to five years, truly. Because when you start to implement change, you need a year for them to learn, or staff to learn. The second year, we start implementing. Year three, we start analyzing, you know? So that's just the, I tell the teachers that as well, you know, we need to learn first before, go slow to go fast. It's another one of my little Renee-isms.
When you're talking about early intervention, and we've got the preschool at Lexington, is it too early yet to tell? Or are you able to see changes in whatever evidence-based data you're using? Is, is the preschool beneficial, especially in the kids that are at risk?
So absolutely. Preschool would be beneficial. One of the things we did last year was we trained the preschool teachers that were with us with the Hagerty. So, but then we did get two new preschool teachers. I do believe that, I don't know if Diane can, I do believe they received the Hagerty training at the county. Okay. So which, that's nice because then they're flowing, you know, in that pre-K and then whatever building they go into, whether it, of our, any of our three buildings, they've had that foundational piece. The majority of evidence that you will see will state that yes, it does make a huge impact attending preschool if there is a rigorous preschool curriculum. You know, there are oftentimes schools that are deemed as preschool that are not necessarily preschool. It's more of daycare. It's more of daycare. I hate to say that, but you know, so those matter too. And what, what curriculums are they following at the preschool level? Good questions. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Kaylee. The next two, I think we can vote together. So I'm looking across the board here and I'm suspecting that some of you, if not all of you, have had experience with the federal financial aid form for college and you know how daunting it is. So the Stark Education Partnership, if you're not familiar, it's a Stark County nonprofit that was, it's funded by some of the big, you know, the Timken Company, the Debold Company, others. And their purpose is to help us, help education in any way they can. So they contacted all the superintendents. They said, do you want in on this? We're writing a grant to help more kids and parents fill out the financial aid form. So I said, yeah, we definitely want in. Marlington's participation in that has been rather low, but that's, you know, all of Stark County has been rather low. So they wrote the grant, received the grant. So our portion is $1,800, which is the first part I'm asking you to accept. And along with the help they're giving us, the $1,800 is really to pay staff members to run parent nights, sit with parents, help them with the form. So much falls on our high school guidance staff. And they'd be doing this work outside of the school day. So in evenings, Saturdays. So the second part is to grant our two high school counselors the funds from the grant. And just so you know, the grant, the guy that actually, from the partnership that is in charge of the grant, quite often gives me updates on what's going on. And right now we're ahead of where we were last year with that form, so. So the two I have, I'm recommending that you accept the grant. And then number four there is that, that grant be used to pay Meredith Joyce and Brianna Arrington.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Pass, 5-0.
Treasurer's agenda.
The first item, agenda item for the treasurer are the minutes for January 20th.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of the following meetings as presented in exhibit? I don't know what exhibit is it? The January 20th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass, 5-0. The next item on the treasurer's agenda is to, is to recommend the adoption of the financial reports as attached.
Okay, is there a motion to recommend the approval or an approve the financial reports and overview of receipts and expenditures for period ending January 31st, 2022?
So moved. Second.
Okay, discussion? You want to highlight some things?
I can go over any questions you have. I do like to highlight certain things that we have coming out of ESER. And this time we do have some professional development on the third page, Carefree Education Service. Other, other than that, it's pretty normal. If you have questions, I can help you. And the last one, the last page is the fund sum. It will give you a summary of all the accounts. At the top, you'll see the OO1 account. And I always like to compare the revenues for the month to the expenditures. And then you can also compare the third column, which is the physical year-to-date receipts versus the physical year-to-date expenditures. And of course, the last column will give you the fund balance for those funds.
Any comments? Okay, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Pass, 5-0. The next agenda item is just a revision of the revenue and budget and appropriations budget. If you look at the first one, that is labeled revenue, right under Marlington Local Schools, you'll see we have under other grants, the O19, we are adding 2,500. And that is the 1,800 that you just approved and another 600 from Altman for a grant. At the, if you go down to the miscellaneous state grants, which is the 499, we have added the bus grant that we were awarded. We have been awarded the 135,000, so we are adding that into our revenue. Our appropriations, same thing. We had our O19 are the grants that we brought in. That's just the expenditure to spend that. And also the 499, that is now a part of our appropriations upon your approval. If you decide to move forward, we have that all ready for you to go.
Okay. I don't think we did. Is there a motion to approve the revenue and budget revisions as presented?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass, 5-0. The last action item for the treasurer is the donations.
Is there a motion to approve the following donations for February 2022? The Alliance Area Retired Teachers, $600. Grace Community Church, $450. Stark Community Foundation, on behalf of John and Norma Teepel and Lucille Crone Memorial Fund, $250.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Pass, 5-0.
And we thank them for their donations. Personnel.
Okay. Good evening again. I don't see any reason why we can't do one vote. There's not much here, but let me go through all of the personnel items. We have a resignation from track there, that's Tyler Kwaznikah. We have a recommendation to approve the permanent classified sub, Jill Gunther. And then these non-traditional subs, once again, these are folks that may not have a bachelor's degree, but that Renee Kaylee and I have deemed that they're okay to sub for us. So they'll get a non-traditional license and then that expires at the end of the year, as you, school year. As you could see, we got more interest than I thought we would get.
Wonderful.
So that's great. Then I'm recommending, we've, it's, as you can imagine, it's been hard to get subs, keep track of subs. One of our subs that comes every day got a permanent job right in the middle of the school year. So I'm recommending John Fendler to you, to add him as one of our permanent subs that come every day. Classified sub, we have Kristen Dixon to add to our classified sub list. Supplementals, we have, I have two supplementals there. Mark Knopick for assistant baseball coach and Greg Travis for baseball coach aide. And then I have one supplemental change for you. We tried to go with one ski advisor this year and split, split the stipend, but instead of two. But the one resigned and she's no longer with us. So Amy Coman ended up with the lion's share. So it's, I think it's only right to bump Amy up to the full stipend. So we originally had Amy at half a stipend, but she really deserves the full, and it, it's a labor of love, believe me, she doesn't get very much for those ski trips and it's a lot of paperwork. So those are, although we, we are getting some skiing in this year, as you can imagine. So those are the personnel.
Is there a motion to, to approve Dr. Mike's personnel recommendations?
Second.
I have a question. On the permanent sub, is that sub at the high school? Or is that for the whole district?
Well, the, he could be the permanent one that we had, could be the whole, for the whole district, but he's more of an elementary guy.
Oh, okay.
We're just using him in elementary right now.
Do we have any indication of whether the state is going to reinstitute that substitute, the?
The non-traditional substitutes? Any indications at all? No, nothing yet. Many states have gone with associate's degree or even some Florida even less, but they have, yeah, some experience. In Florida, high school diploma. So I'll let you guys know if they decide to do that.
I was just wondering if they were anticipating things easing up next year?
Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Pass, 5-0.
So we moved the next board meeting notification to this spot. It will be, no, we need to, is?
I had asked the board if we could have the board meeting the following Thursday, on the 24th instead of the 17th, just for next month, if that's okay with?
I can't.
Okay, then we'll.
It's you or me.
No, 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 then we'll keep, we'll keep it, we'll keep it as is and we'll figure it out.
Just on that note, the legislature and the governor, I believe, just passed a bill where you can do virtual meetings again and have voting. So there may be some hybrid option there for people that are, you know, on vacation or something, if they're able to attend.
Just, in, in any case, I can zoom in. In their normal circumstance, you can't. In Ohio, you have to be present. I did see that new law come through, I don't know what, so if, I want you guys to be here if I have to.
I believe they extended it through the end of June.
They did, through the school year.
So a board member can zoom in as a?
I'll check.
We can hold virtual meetings and I believe that should include, you know, hybrid as well.
Can't be here on the 24th and Dr. Mike can't be here on the 17th. Do we have to do it on a Thursday? I can't at all that, that week.
That week she couldn't do it.
I'm out that week. Oh. What if we did it on the 16th?
I'm good with.
You could do the 16th?
I could do that.
Does that work for everyone else?
Yeah.
Cause it's St. Patty's Day, Dr. Mike? Is that what you're making?
Actually, it's something that was way back before the pandemic that has been pushed and pushed and pushed.
I mean.
I'm okay.
Yeah, I'm good with the sixes.
What day, what day of the week is that?
Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday. I'm just thinking this through. With the new law, I don't, I think the meeting has to be all virtual or not. I don't think one board member can virtual, but I'll check on that for you, just so you know in the future. Okay, so are you okay with that, Dr. Mayne? We'll change that.
Sure.
Does more 16th work?
I wonder so.
Wednesday sounds good. Wednesday, March 16th. Okay, so the next board meeting will be held Wednesday, March 16th at 7:00 PM in the high school DLZ. Or a motion for that?
So moved. Second.
Okay. Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Pass, 5-0.
Thank you for that, folks.
Okay, executive session. We need a motion for the Marlington Local School District Board of Education to recess into executive session pursuant to revise Code 121.22G1 to consider the employment or evaluation of a public employee in G5 for matters required to be kept confidential by federal law, federal rules or state statutes. All matters discussed in this executive session are designated to the public officials and employees as confidential pursuant to revise Code 102.03B because of the status of the proceedings and/or the circumstances under which the information will be received and preserving its confidentiality is necessary to the proper conduct of government business. Following executive session, no action is expected.
So moved.
Second.
Call the roll, please.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Ms. Humphries?
Yes.
Ms. Krupko?
Yes.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Pass, 5-0.
Okay. Time in is 8:21. Thank you for coming. Good night. Good night.
All right, here we go.
Declared out of executive session at 9:28 PM. So we'll need a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Oh, second.
Jonathan and Kathy. Okay. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Swift?
Yes.
Mrs. Kripko?
Yes.
Mr. Hagan?
Yes.
Mrs. Humphreys?
Yes.
Mr. Ryan?
Yes.
Passed, five, zero.
All right, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody.
It's only thirty minutes.
I don't think it ever lasts. Oh, yeah, he's turning out.
Can I borrow you a umbrella?
You could walk with you.
I'm so...